...to order at 7:37 and ask you to please rise for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. It's the pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mrs. Steele, seconded by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0 with Mr. Duffy absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is student government, student activities. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Gabby Salmon. I'm vice president of student government. So for our current news, the past week we started our Pennies for Patients campaign, and in our first week we raised almost $1,500. So we're very confident that we're going to reach our goal of 10,000. This week, spring fling tickets will go on sale. That'll be on April 10th, oh, April 11th, sorry. It's from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. in our high school cafeteria, and the theme for this year's dance is "Under the Stars," and we're hoping for a great turnout. Also, our next blood drive will be on April 14th from 7:30 to 2:30 in the Transcal. Free pizza will be given to all donors, and this is our last blood drive of the year. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Nice. Next item on the agenda is, bye. The consent agenda. I have approval of minutes, regular meeting, 2/26/2015, executive session, 2/26/2015, enrollment report from 3/1, school police report from 2/1, residency-truancy report from 3/1. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Fiorello, seconded by Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0. Next item is report of executive session meeting from 3/12/2015. There were no votes taken this evening, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mrs. Steele, seconded by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0. Next item, recognition. Dr. Thornton.
Evening. We have one recognition for this evening. Before I start, I have assistance here to help me. Coach Gordon, please come up. Part of Coach Gordon's team tradition is they play this song before all of their meets. I just wanted to let you know to walk the coach up. First question I would ask is, back in 1968, where were all of you? I was three. Coach Gordon was coaching here, coaching wrestling. So truly an outstanding accomplishment. 500 victories. Who can say that, really? Just outstanding, and obviously still going strong as a coach. I should congratulate you. And we can just see this evening, just a couple of school department recognizes Steve Gordon, CHS wrestling coach, 500 victories, and appreciation for your many years of dedication to the sport, and your commitment to the students and their families. Coaching.
So while you're putting on your jacket, Coach, I'll just say thank you tremendously for all of those victories and since 1968. I won't tell you where I was at that point in my life, but I was probably in diapers, toddling around. But an impressive career with the students. And what I would say as a parent of boys who never decided that wrestling was going to be their sport, to see what kids, what engagement the level of kids have had with the sport, it's wonderful and tremendous. And to see the enthusiasm in all of the posts, you have such a huge fan club, and I think it's because you're such a great leader and a wonderful coach, and I'd wrestle here right now if I could. But I know you have to go, so. But thank you for your inspiration and your spirit.
Thank you very much.
All right. Dr. Thornton, we have a few other items on superintendent's report.
And we have the folks here tonight for the Quebec trip report. Take it away.
Bonsoir, messieurs dames. Je vous présente de notre voyage à Québec. Don't worry, I'm not going to do the whole thing. That is one of the significant reasons why we do this, is the French with love. So this year was our 15th annual, it's going to be 17th annual, quick trip to Quebec City in Canada, which started out as a way in order to encourage students to get excited about learning French in the middle school, and has grown into, from one bus to four buses that we took from both middle schools this year, up to the city of Quebec in Quebec province in Canada, to expose the kids to a lot of history, a lot of food, a lot of language, and just has been a wonderful experience for the students. I can't stop talking about it.
I'm just going to add, as we go into our trip, that this is my first trip up to Quebec. It's my second year at the middle school. I am so sorry I did not go last year as well. It's a fantastic experience in terms of culture for the kids, for bonding with the kids, for making those connections that are super important at the middle school, and I am so happy we were allowed to do this. And on a side note, I want to thank you guys for postponing us until now so we could go to the basketball field the last minute.
Gabby's going to use the mic. Gabby's one of our eighth grade students that attended the trip, one of our Francophile. She's going to talk from the heart about her own experiences.
This Quebec trip has been one of the most incredible opportunities that I have ever had. Throughout these four days, I was able to experience so many amazing things, which broadened my horizon and allowed me to gain cultural insight that is not often obtained until a later age. As a French student, traveling to Quebec was extremely beneficial, as I was able to actually practice my world language with native speakers, and have the chance to deepen my understanding of the French culture. Though it was as little as "what time is it?", "how much is this?", "and how are you?", and even just "thank you", "yes" and "no", I was able to truly get a feel for how French is spoken day to day, and following the trip, I found myself saying "merci" instead of "thank you" for about a month. The opportunity to travel out of the country is one of the most amazing things, and to be able to see a city as incredible as Quebec in just the eighth grade is so wonderful. Any international travel is an experience of a lifetime, but to be able to make the most of a trip like we did in Quebec is just exhilarating. Viewing how Quebec differs from the United States was another aspect of the Quebec trip that is extremely valuable to students. Traveling outside of the USA deepens one's respect for culturing, for differing cultures, and it allows travelers to experience cultural activities that are particular to just that location, which was achieved during the Quebec trip. In Quebec, I made wonderful memories. Dog sledding, tubing at the largest water park in North, Winter Park in North America, tobogganing, traveling atop the mountain Suri Falls Bridge, sightseeing both historic sites such as the Château Frontenac, and tourist sites such as the Hotel de Glace, snowshoeing, purchasing items native to Quebec, trying different foods native to Quebec, and much more. Besides being exhilarating and joyous, the common trait between each of these activities is that they were made possible or improved greatly because I was in Quebec. These memories that I made with best friends and teachers during Quebec are immense. It was great to be able to interact with my loving school community outside of the classroom environment and experience unimaginable opportunities together. Leading up to the trip, I was beyond excited because of all the raving reviews, and now, after having participated, I confirm that my expectations were beyond exceeded. I already look forward to returning again in the future, and through this trip, not only have I gained greater amounts of French language and history, not only have I matured culturally, not only have I gained another insight to the world, but I have had one of the most incredible experiences offered to me, and I am so grateful. Thank you.
I'm just going to begin. I want you to know that this is a slide presentation that was put together by the students. It was their words, it was their pictures, and this is what they wanted you to see from their trip. So to begin, we're going to go on with like personal growth and trip summary. It was a once in a lifetime opportunity. They learned about history, they were, oops, excuse me, taking risks and stepping outside of their comfort zones to use the language. They had, sorry, they had new experiences and a light kind of memories were made. So I'm going to turn this over to Connor now, and he's going to kind of join me as we go back and forth with the slides. So Connor, what do you have to say?
Bonsoir, mesdames et messieurs. Je m'appelle Connor Jotan. Aujourd'hui, je parle à deux à Québec. So I, my mother's side of the family is entirely French. I have relatives who have lived in Quebec for many, many years. But growing up, I really had very little exposure to the French language, and I really didn't learn much more than "bonjour" or "merci". So eventually, I graduated in middle school, and I began to learn about the French language. And not only can you learn about the language, but when you learn to look at the language, you have to understand the culture, which is what I've learned with this class. So I had no application to use what I was learning in school. I could not speak French in South America. There's not many uses for the language. So finally, an opportunity was provided for me to speak the language, assimilate to the culture, and understand what really goes on in the French community.
So this next slide is, again, a student-made slide, and these are the highlights that they want you to know about. They went dog sledding, they danced to the Sugar Shack to traditional fiddle music, and that was a sight. We got an extraordinary, an extraordinary part, tobogganing at night, touring the upper and lower city, going on a historical scavenger hunt, snowshoeing, tasting exotic foods, walking all over Quebec, meeting new people and learning more French, looking for the highest building, having a fun time on the bus ride, and learning tricks at the circus school. So the next piece of it that we talked about when we were doing this activity in class, we talked about, all right, what would somebody want to know from this trip? We decided that an educational piece most certainly is beneficial. So they made a slide, education, history, culture, and geography of Quebec. These are things that they learned. They had full immersion into the French language and culture. We went to the observatory, where we could see the St. Lawrence River and the plains of Abraham, and we went and looked at this statue of Champlain, and we learned about the history of Quebec. I'm going to turn this back over to Connor now.
So it really, there's a very stark comparison between learning in a classroom and actually experiencing what you have been learning. So in history class and French class, I had a great time, but you never really experienced what you were talking about. And on this trip, I found myself asking random citizens for directions with complete confidence. I would talk to store owners in the French language, and it was a great experience to assimilate into the French language and really speak it for the first time in my life. It was also the first time I had left the United States, so that was pretty cool. You learned about the French language before and the impact that it had on world history in history class, but in Quebec, we really experienced what was happening and how it has shaped our modern society. We saw in the observatory, the geography of Quebec, and it was really impressive. I'm actually a plate of heights, but it was, it was worth a super fast elevator ride just to see that view. It was a great experience. We learned about all of Quebec's history. We learned from its colonization to what it is today. We learned about its geography, its special attraction, tourism. It was a great experience. I learned so much about money and all of the price differences, just the little nuances like a comma and a period are switched in the money. It was a very different experience, and it was very enjoyable.
Okay. So Connor happens to be very good in history, not one of my history students might be, but very good. And we went to the Maritella Towers. Now, when you're looking at these little round buildings, you're not thinking too much about it, but it was really humorous, a lot of the kids to know that these buildings were actually meant to protect Canada from invaders from the United States. So they thought that was kind of, it was really funny. Now, I'm going to let Connor tell you a little bit about some of the experiences they had inside the building.
So inside the tower, you really learned what life was like, being a British soldier back in colonial times. And one of the funniest parts was the punishment. If you, if you did, if you misstepped as a soldier, you really got reprimanded for it. So the demonstration they had for us was using a special mania called a woody horse. Basically, a wooden slab, and they would select a student from the ranks and have him sit on there for about a minute. And what they would do with the soldiers back then is have them sit out in the rain for about two hours naked, turning to this very thin and uncomfortable piece of wood. It really.
The heavy backpack.
Oh, yeah. So you can only imagine how much that would have hurt. And the reflection you would have.
All right. So Connor's already spoken about, yes, spoken about the observatory. This is a picture from the top. It's beautiful.
And all these pictures were student pictures. These were pictures taken by our students while they were there.
So then we had the language and culture piece. So what they wanted you to know about this was they were experiencing new activities, like they said before, tobogganing, dog sledding, snowshoeing. They loved all that outside opportunity, especially considering it's very normal in Quebec for them to do this, and in here in the United States, it is not. So it was pretty unusual for them to do. They had an opportunity to speak French, exposure to the language and context, and they went to the circus, and I want to go back to the exposure to the language and context for a moment. If you see the background, that is a chocolate parfait, and there's some hot chocolate there and some fruit. This was our breakfast one morning. And on Connor's cards over here, one of his, one of his little notes is "food" in all capital letters, so I'm going to let him rock on it.
The food in Quebec was unbelievable, some of the best I had ever consumed in my entire life. And everything imaginable was covered in maple syrup. It was just fantastic. Instead of alcohol, it was a bit more. And not only the language and culture, but also the music. Music is a very large part of culture. And during the bus rides from station to location throughout Quebec, we would listen to both traditional and modern French music, and it really sparked an interest for me in French music, and listening to it every single day. And then we were experiencing to learn new things, and then I had, again, I could actually speak French to someone who was still French.
As you, as you all know, in order to really get an understanding of a language, you have to be immersed in the culture, and really in order to force yourself to go outside of your comfort zone and use the language, it does infinitely more than I can ever do in a classroom in terms of getting these kids to use the language and to speak to somebody. And they would have people come up to them and talk to them and say to them, "Thank you for coming to visit our, our city." And, and our kids were kind of blown away by that, that we were so welcome and just really had the opportunity to, to challenge themselves at that next level with the language.
We went to the Ice Hotel, Hotel de Class, and that I found very fascinating. The fact that they sculpt out this hotel every year, people stay in it, it begins to melt, they bulldoze it down, and then they do it again the next year. It's unique each year. There's ice everywhere, ice beds, ice tables, ice winters ways, ice bars, ice cups, ice everything. So Connor, what do you have to say about it?
Well, first of all, it exemplifies really one of the main characteristics of Quebec, is really cold. And the second thing is, it really taught us a lesson in engineering with what they used to structure the hotel. The structure was out of a pointed arch, just so that the weight would be evenly distributed across the entire archway, and therefore the ice can support a very heavy weight in a matter of time of year, especially when it started to melt, they could still run bulldozers across the top of the roof, and it would be very sturdy.
So Sugar Shack, this was a great night. It was the peace doers of the stones. We went in after a long day. My bus was the bus that was dog sledding before that. It was freezing that day. We walked in, there's this beautiful warm fire, there's music playing, it's all warm, it's like a rustic cabin. You could smell the food cooking, the fiddles are playing, it was awesome. And the kids were smiling and laughing and dancing and having the best time. And everybody was doing it. Everybody was on the floor. It was unbelievable, teachers included. We didn't include those pictures. So at the Sugar Shack, at the Sugar Shack, we learned a bit, a little bit about making maple syrup, traditional music and dances, and the traditional cuisine, as Connor said, covered in maple syrup. Everything. Anything to add about that, Connor?
By the time my bus arrived, we all walked in, and it was just a large room, and it was full of amazing traditional music played by about two or three people just playing fiddles. And everyone was either on the dance floor or enjoying the food. So me and my friends sat down, and we ate peace soon after. There was some meat there, so a lot of.
Thanks.
I think the one that I grabbed. Extra good. It was a different experience. Covered in maple syrup.
Maple syrup.
It was great nonetheless.
Yep, it was great. So the physical part of this, you know, we always kind of take a look at physical education and say, "Oh, yeah, physical education is a state game." I can tell you, I partnered up with one of the PE teachers in town, Carrie Carpenter, and we had all our kids together. She says, "Man, this is like a PE trip too, on top of the education and the culture." Because we were outside all the time, climbing up and down thousands, I mean literally thousands of stairs, going up and down the mountains. We were tobogganing, we were tubing, we were dog sledding, snowshoeing, dancing. I mean, it, there was not a moment where we stopped, and every single moment was special because we learned. And if you look at this picture carefully, this was actually one of the kids taking a picture on the dog sled. Now, my group actually went at night, and it was pitch black, and I was holding on like this because I was scared to death, but it was a really neat experience.
As I said, I'm, I get oceans there on the way to place. I went tubing, I went tobogganing, it was amazing. It was just incredible. Spent about three hours just going down these really awesome slopes, and it took about four, five minutes to climb. And tobogganing at about like 40 miles per hour. The dog sledding was kind of dark, and I had to comfort my partner a little bit.
And the West is right out.
It was all, it was all quite a work of art.
Yeah. Yep. So this slide I kept exactly as the kids handed it in to me. This is what we thought of this trip. Having the freedom every day to explore and shop with our best friends was awesome. Getting to see the beauty of the old Walt City, meeting new people, making new friends, and they did, they made new friends from other schools that were there visiting as well. Getting to try to eat Canadian food such as.
Coutinho.
Coutinho. Because I know it's made another way, not this. Dancing at the Sugar Shack, getting to hold the puppies at the dog sledding place. They were very cute, they were this big, very cute. Making friends with kids from other schools, like I said, getting out of our comfort zone and speaking French to people, getting to try new things that we can't do in the USA, such as dog sledding, snowshoeing, and tubing at the world's largest tubing park, listening to French music, and just making memories. This is a picture from where we went to circus school. This is one of the buses, and you can flash forward to that one.
And in talking about the, the language and the music that they were immersed in, ironically, when they, these guys took the national French exam, they come back and they tell me, "Well, the, one of the questions on the national French exam was the musician that they had been exposed to in Quebec." So it doesn't relate much more to the French than that.
Okay. So now we have Paige Cook, who is going to kind of let you know what her experience was in terms of immersion into this new.
Bonjour, Jean-Paul Paige Cook. If you're wondering why I just said "I said hello" in French. These are two expressions I used a lot while traveling, traveling to Quebec and Montreal, Canada. While going to Canada, I was able to test my skills in French and carry on conversations. I practiced my skills when introducing myself and meeting new people. This gave me the opportunity to strengthen my skills by using them in the real world. I picked up new terms as well, such as "sais ma lae", which means "it is sick". This has not only developed my French vocabulary, but broadened it. Next, this trip allowed me to grow and learn. I grew by using my vocabulary in context, and I learned by gaining new knowledge about the language and the people there. This trip has offered many experiences for my language development and understanding. Also, this trip has motivated me to want me, to want to study French throughout high school and even into college. This is because I learned new vocabulary, and because of that, it just motivates me to learn even more. I actually understood the French too, which like I was kind of surprised about, and that was really cool. So during the trip, I enjoyed and appreciated how I got to use the language in context and just hear how the people speak it. It's a beautiful language. And like Madame Bree said, we got exposed to a lot of the music, like at the Sugar Shack with the fiddle and everything, and we were dancing the night away. And the, when I went to take the national French exam, one of the like questions and I guess little essays on it was about this song called Papa Unté, and I knew a lot about it, and I was like, it was cool. And then the food was amazing. When we went to the Sugar Shack, that was authentic food. Like you had meat pie, mashed potatoes, scrambled eggs, and, and then the croissants are to die for. They are amazing. So in conclusion, this trip was one of the best things out there for me, and I enjoyed the opportunity to not only learn the newer language, but the culture. Thank you.
So before I let Madame Bree do her ending, I would like to add personally, I have been very fortunate to be able to travel all over the world. And I saw the wonder on these children's faces when they walked into that old city and saw this beautiful old street that looked like Diagon Alley from Harry Potter with all of the light, and they were getting ready for the winter festival. And I said, "You know what? This is something that these children will never forget." And it is quite friendly, an opportunity to leave the United States that some children may never get again in their whole entire life. And I really think the fact that we were allowed to go on this trip is going to be something that these kids carry with them, and in our global society, they did see there is a different world beyond Rhode Island, beyond Massachusetts, beyond the United States, and it's a wonderful place to be.
And before I conclude, I would like to also offer a very special thank you to Leslie Moore, because this trip would not be possible without her.
Alors, messieurs dames, une vraie version bien de votre attention est surtout pour nous faire possible ce voyage est du cas. C'est extraordinaire. Alors, en temps de mode, de français, couloir.
About as far as I go in these days. I will say though, that having had an experience traveling abroad a long, long time ago, we met a gentleman in a hotel, and I got to use my high school French to speak with him. And what he shared with us was, we were visiting my husband's grandfather's cemetery in France, northern France. He died in World War II. And what the gentleman shared with us all in French was how appreciative they were that, that, that our forces helped them, because at that time, during the war, their village was occupied by Germany, and they're a French country, and they felt very strongly that they are a part of France. And so with just the high school French, I was able to hear a story, and it was quite a, quite a moving opportunity for us. Just, just hearing what you've experienced is pretty phenomenal. And I'll also say, handful of years ago, we had a presentation from, it was either the Washington DC trip, and I don't know if any of you were on the committee then, but that hadn't, we haven't had that type of presentation, so thank you for sharing it. It's very exciting to see the students and their interaction with us, so outstanding job. Same.
Yes, I have to say, since I've been on the school committee, this has been the best presentation for this trip yet. I do have a couple of quick questions. My daughter went on the trip, she had a great time. One of the small obstacle that I saw was the, the payment platform for the trip. Has that been ironed out? I know personally, we, you have to pay by credit card. I went on, it was an international company. My bank doesn't recognize international companies, and thought it was fraudulent, stopped the credit card.
And there were a few experiences, we handled that with some other parents as well. I can tell you that they were, the company that we, that we did the business with was great about it from, from our perspective, but I, it's something that we will, we've written down and will keep in the future.
And then also, I don't know if there's anything we can do about this, the time that they leave for the trip, they have to go to school in the morning with a sandwich, and then they leave after school, the sandwich sits in the bag, you know, they get in late, they're tired the next day. I don't know if we can do anything about that. I don't know if we can do anything about that.
To leave earlier.
But I, that's what I mean, I don't know if we, if we, if we can adopt the thought and maybe we can, I'm, I'm just saying, maybe we can try to do something to leave a little bit earlier.
All right. All right. That late night, that first night was yikes.
Maybe we can, maybe we can look into it because I think it is, it's a little accommodating for the children getting in late with a soggy sandwich.
All right, good, thank you.
And I would just say that because of a presentation like that, when you come to ask if you can leave earlier, now that we've had such a wonderful insight into what you've learned and, and just the experience that you've had, we're much more inclined to support requests like that.
Can you kind of give the kids feel themselves?
Very much so. And I hope that the students that enjoyed that would consider in college or even before college or high school that they do a junior year abroad or some experience international. There's lots of opportunities out there for personal experience. It's, it's an incredible opportunity.
And I would have to agree with Mrs. Adria that seeing the, the kids.
Enters your perspective on the world.
People say this, I've been on the trip 12 times. I'm tired of seeing the same things. It's seeing them, that's, that's the reason why we do that.
That's very nice, thank you.
Mr. DeMonica.
Just for the eighth graders, high school's going to the Black Rose Islands. I don't think they'll have maple seeds.
Nicely done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Thornton, I think we are tabling the discussion of growth mindset until the next meeting?
That's correct.
Thank you. So we have a couple of extra weeks to do our reading. Thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda is Chairperson's Report of Money Formula and the BEP. I know the House Commission will be meeting tomorrow to talk a little bit about the Fair Funding Formula and I think there are a few presenters, one of which is Dr. Thornton. Next item on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committee's Payment of Bills. Mr. DeMonica.
Madam Chair, the Finance Subcommittee did meet on Tuesday night. Mr. Pignaro presented the bills for payment and they removed payment of the bills in the amount of $2,56,111.06.
Mr. DeMonica moved the passage of the payment of bills, stored in the second, second by Mr. Denon. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
Madam Chair, we did meet again on Tuesday and Mr. Pignaro passed out a worksheet about special education costs, but we're checking with Rye for some clarification on regards to special ed. We also had discussion that Dr. Thornton passed out a sheet on the BEP budget gap, which was putting to everyone's fault for review. And the biggest part of the night was, we had discussion about Sedesco and their food service contract with us. The district currently has outstanding $9,800 in, in fees due for lunch, for total for the district. And we're trying to work out a way to collect that money without embarrassing a student or something like that. We know there could be some circumstances out there at home. And so we need to try to resolve that. We cannot carry that figure anymore throughout the year, so we have to work on collecting that $9,800. And the other thing was is Rye, I mean, Sedesco completed their audit for the weighted average price equity. And that comes down to what, what we paid for lunch versus free versus reduced and paid. We fell short by about four cents per meal. So we will be coming back to the full committee to raise the price of the elementary school lunch to $2.35 beginning next year. Currently, the high school is at $3 and the middle school is at $2.50. And this hasn't been done in, for two years now, so we need to bring that up so that we remain compliant with the federal government in regards to that. And finally, Tucker from Sedesco passed out a updated school inspection report and we know the examiner will be coming in next month so we can review it to make sure we're compliant with our school lunch inspections. And that comes in very quick.
Thank you. Mr. DeMonica, the, one other items that you mentioned was related to BEP, I believe. Is, is that in our packet, Dr. Thornton? Do you know? I was, I was trying to find what, where specifically it is.
I believe it is, it'll talk about a 5.5 gap. I believe that's it. But if not, we can certainly make sure that's available to them.
Okay.
Yeah, actually it's called a date to core and non-core expenditures, it's in your, it is in your folder.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's in the business.
I see, yep, Marcha Loewen, got it, thank you. Is it possible for us to put this on the district website? Thank you. What it, what it does point out, and this is something that we've looked at throughout our BEP conversation, what you see here is there are five major categories. And the first one is face-to-face teaching. Then we have pupil and teacher support, operations, other commitments, and leadership. And what you see is teaching is from fiscal 13 to fiscal 14, it actually looks like a decrease from 31.5 million to 31.2 million. Then in pupil and teacher support, there's been an increase in, from 7.1 to 7.6 million. Operations, an increase from 9.5 million to 11.0 million. Other commitments, 4.8 to 4.9 million. And then leadership from, gosh, these numbers are so small, 3.6 to 3.2 million. And beneath that, there's a breakdown in what is considered core and non-core expenses and then what is remaining to support students in the BEP. So I think it's, it's important to look at all of the slides around this because it talks about some of the audited and unaudited numbers. And the last two slides on here, and I really appreciate this being in part of our packet, is the shortfall last year was 4.7 million. That's now increased to 5.5 million. And the two biggest line item activities in here would be tuition and pension. Dr. Thornton, off the top of your head, are there any other big budget busters in there?
Those are the big two. I'll speak to them a little bit about our budget, but those are the important ones right now. The pension's around $0.500. The tuition is around eight, eight change. Both together, we're up $0.3 million.
And the local share increase last year, to your recollection, was one point? Do you, do you recall what the local share increase was? Mr. Pignaro here?
Do you mean the state aid increase?
Nope, the, the town increase.
Eight, that was eight ninety-six, what, what they're abouts with another, we also had the six fifty-one on the town side for purchasing the materials.
So, so essentially, what we saw last year was the lion's share of the money went to charter tuitions and pension costs.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeMonica. Next item on the agenda is Policy and Procedure Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, Policy met on Tuesday night. We had a discussion on the G6 personnel benefit policy for the non-unit administrative and support personnel. We discussed some items of vacation time and also life insurance and a couple other aspects of it. No vote was taken, it was tabled for our next meeting, which we will bring it to the full committee next time so that as the administration is moving forward with contracts, everything will be in place for them. We also continued our discussion on gift acceptance policy while setting limits for gifts towards teachers and coaches. Right now, there is no policy, no limits. We're looking at some policies from other towns as well as Massachusetts. And hopefully we'll have something crafted in the next couple of months. Nothing that we're going to move on right away. And that's pretty much all of our meeting.
Thank you very much. Next item, Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Teal.
Thanks. Chief Menace this afternoon, or CV rather. We had four make a presentation. They presented their findings of what they're doing for reading intervention and math intervention. There's a lot of good work going on. There's still kids that are still struggling, but we're putting in place, or they're putting in place interventions that's helping those kids succeed. There's definitely identified need for additional employees that can support those students and it was important to have that discussion now as we're going into the budget season. We will be meeting again, I believe it's going to be March 24th at 7:30. And at that meeting, Garv will be giving us an update and we're going to go through all of our schools. They're going to give us updates about, you know, what's taking place within their schools, what they're doing for meeting the needs of students that are struggling as well as students that are not in need services so that they can move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Building Committee Update, Mr. Fiorello, no report this evening, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item is Public Hearing, Reading of Policies. So there was no action on G6, so we will take no action this evening. Next item on the agenda is Comments from the Public. Does anyone wish to speak this evening? No? All right, hearing none. Next item, New Business, K-8 Math Curriculum Update. Dr. Thornton.
Mr. Mitchell. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. There was an article in last week's, actually it was the March 4th Online Newsletter of Education Week about math curricula. In fact, the title of the piece was "Most Math Curricula Found to Be Out of Sync with the Common Core." If you'll indulge me, I'd just like to share a few snippets of this article with the school committee and with the public because I think it's good news for us. The first round of a Consumer Report-style review for instructional materials paints a dismal picture of the textbook publishing industry's response to the new standards. The new standards are the Common Core, state standards. Seventeen of 20 math series reviewed were judged as failing to live up to claims that they are aligned to the Common Core, even though they claim that they are aligned to the Common Core. The reviews released online last Wednesday by the nonprofit EdReports.org were conducted by small groups of teachers and instructional leaders from across the country. They looked at digital and print K through 8 mathematics materials from widely-used publishers, and these are pretty well-known publishers, including Pearson, McGraw-Hill, Houghton, Houghton Mifflin, Harcourt, as well as from some lesser-known providers whose texts pass state review processes. The results echo previous alignment studies conducted by university-based researchers. In general, the results are pretty bad for all the publishers. In all, just one curriculum series stood out from the pack. Eureka Math, published by Great Minds, a small Washington-based nonprofit organization, was found to be aligned to the Common Core state standards at all grade levels reviewed. And fortunately for us, we are using Eureka Math. We're currently using Eureka Math in grades K through 6. We are moving to Eureka Math in grade 7 next year and grade 8 the following year. There's a lot of information in the report, but just, just a few other little snippets. The EdReports.org website uses a three-tiered rating system. And that rating system is meets criteria, partially meets criteria, or does not meet criteria for each gateway. Eureka Math far surpassed all other curricula evaluated. It was found to be aligned for all grades K through 8 and passed through all three gateways. Eureka Math differs from other texts in that rather than being an update to existing material, it was designed specifically for the Common Core. So this is encouraging news for us. We spent a lot of time and effort as the district teachers and administrators were involved in reviewing curricula. And it's encouraging for us to know that, you know, we selected a curriculum that is aligned to the Common Core state standards. So we just thought it was important to share that with all of you this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Just a, just a quick one, Mr. Mitchell. So we know that we'll be beginning PARC testing. What, what are the expectations around the results for that for us for year one? I know with NECAP, it seemed to take a tremendous amount of time.
Well, in the letter that we sent out to all of the parents in the district, one of the things that we mentioned in the letter is that whenever there is a new assessment given for the first time, there is something called the implementation dip. And as you may have heard, when they, they piloted in New York last year, there was a fairly significant drop in proficiency in New York, like a 30% drop in proficiency. So, we are expecting, and, and, you know, we've, we've tried to make everyone aware that, you know, since this is the first, this is the first time that we are expecting an implementation dip. And one of the concerns is this, and we've had many conversations about this, is this assessment is not only an assessment of the standards, this is also a technology assessment. And Mr. Costa, Mrs. Diane, all of the principals, all of our guidance counselors have spent an exorbitant amount of time preparing for this assessment. So, which I, I'm like impressed and at the same time sort of amazed at how much time and effort it's taken us to prepare for that. So, the bottom line is we are, I think, I think we're ready. People have been practicing. The curriculum is aligned in both math and ELA. And, you know, all we can do is give it our best shot. When we get the results, we'll learn from it and get better year after year. That's the goal.
When would we likely expect the results to be returned?
I think they're expecting, I mean, one of the advantages of online testing is that, you know, from the get-go, PARC has been stating publicly that we're going to get the results much quicker than with paper. But I, I, I believe that we're, we're going to be getting them, I believe, in the fall, this first time through.
Thank you. And thank you to our technology team for all their efforts bringing us up to speed. I can remember talking about PARC and we were worried it was going to have to be in paper because we just had such a, a lack of technology. So to see the district go wireless and to see us have technology at the middle school and then strategies around supporting it at the high school, I think it was.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I could just, forgive me for interrupting, but I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. I should have mentioned that Mike Chandler and his team have also put a tremendous amount of time and effort into planning as you can. We've also purchased a significant number of Chromebooks and, you know, it's, I don't think most people understand how much work has to be done to, to get those Chromebooks or technology into the hands of teachers and students. We have weekly meetings and we've been meeting for the last two months at least, every Friday. His team, Rhonda Diane and myself, and, and also Rachel, Rachel Sandor, the interim Special Ed Director, have been meeting to coordinate this massive undertaking. So I, I just wanted to recognize Mike and his team for their work on this because it's, it's been tremendous.
Yeah, I really wish we could do a little playback of old school committee meetings where we were like, "This will never work." So it's, it's wonderful to hear that we've made such dramatic progress in the area of technology, so thank you. Next item on the agenda, update on K and Grade 1 Open Registration Days. Dr. Thornton.
On March 4th and 5th, we had our K registration. In all, we had 170 registrations, 31 in Ashton, 28 in Beaverton, 15 in Community, 25 in Crumwell and 36 at Garv, in total of 170. Add to that the 42 students entering K from the preschool. You know, we're on track from last year, we're on 212, typically over something another 100 students or so. Last year at this time, we had 179, we had 900 more from last year, but typically we're seeing about the same number of kids coming in. Also, we had some students come in Grade 1, Grade 3, and Grade 5. So we're on track right now for the same enrollment as we had last year of K.
Wonderful, thank you. Next item, update on the BEP budget gap.
We covered that, that was our. Mr. Pignaro's here if you want to go deeper into that.
Any questions?
Thank you, cover it.
So, so let's. So, let's, sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder. Let's put this back on the agenda for the next meeting so that if folks have some specific questions, because it is multi-page, does take a little bit of digestion to go over, maybe we can have a little Q and A around that point in time. And I won't take the hair on the roll that time. Next item, Discussion on Fiscal Two Thousand and Sixteen Superintendent's Budget. Dr. Thornton.
Well, this week is the week I give you my budget. Now becomes your budget as you go forward. You have to replace this, just some highlights. If I could spend a minute or two touching upon some highlights from the budget. First off, the budget represents sixty-two million, one sixty-two, eight twenty-three, or a five-point-two percent increase over last year's approved budget. And as you know, this year's budget is also seeing state aid in the form of nine fifty-two, five ninety-six. It's year five of year seven in the funding formula, if you will. At the local level, it represents a two-point-five percent increase from last year, or essentially a million dollars, one million zero zero five nine five five to be exact, in terms of the ask for the town at this point. Some things that really stand out to me in the budget in terms of what's in there in the budget, we have our Chromebook Initiative for grade six, ten, eleven, and twelve, essentially making us a Chromebook district from grade six to twelve. That's in this conversation. Also in here, we have the TV studio back in. As you may recall, T V Tel was in Cumberland back some years ago, so this budget gets it back in the high school. We had the beginnings of a high school computer science pathway in the budget. We have Chromebook cards in the budget for the elementary schools. We have Project Lead the Way to the middle schools where it'll essentially transform the middle school tech ed, if you will, into a modern, robust pathway at the middle level. So, that's all in the budget. In terms of personnel, we have some adds and some subtractions. The adds, in this proposal currently, we have two high school tech teachers to help with the Chromebook rollout. We have two teachers that both come from the middle for enrollment purposes. We have a point-five reading and a point-five math intervention that McCord to help with those students. In terms of subtractions, right now, if numbers hold up, I would reduce by one K teacher at Cumberland Hill. We would reduce by one special ed teacher at the high school, and we'd also reduce by a one-point-oh special ed at the L level, and also two T eights. So, at the end of the day, if you look at our sections, or our teachers, if you will, last year we were at five sixty-three point six. We're tracking now to around five sixty, so we'll go down by three-point-two teachers or staff, if you will, producing T eights if this was to go forward, so we're actually netting a negative three-point-two in staff. In terms of fixed costs, and putting this all in perspective, just a few thoughts on that. As I mentioned earlier, the increase, right, tells us for the neuro-academy charter school, state school piece is eight thirty-two, one forty-seven. The pension increase is five fifty-one. So, together, these two fixed costs that we can control represent more than our total state aid of nine fifty-two, so it's kind of sober. Taking those pieces out, our ask goes from five point, no, not our ask, our increase goes from five-point-two percent to three-point-five percent in terms of total budget year-over-year, to give a sense of that. I would also point out to you that we always, with Alex's help, are looking forward several years to kind of see what's happening in the out years. And I really do want to point out to you, while it is concerning each year that our state aid gets taken up by the fixed costs we can control, in FY nineteen, that's the year the state aid will, the seven-year rollup ends, if you will, kind of where we are. That's also a year the neuro-academy charter school, state school will still increase as far as what we're seeing here. So, in essence, only the local appropriation can help us in that year. So, the state aid has helped blunt some of the increases, if you will. The state aid levels out, and the costs have began the same level, around two percent increase just for the charter or oral cost, another percent for the pension cost, and three percent already to the town will buy a book. So, that's sober. That's just the year nineteen. That's really something to look at. Happy thoughts there. In terms of infrastructure, our good news, we finished the door safety project. I'm really happy with that project. Now, we're really working with the Builder Committee, the Mayor's Office, the Town Council, the School Committee, Mark, in terms of doing phase two to get the reversion for I for our F cap. As you may know, if we get phase two in, we reverse forty-two cents on every dollar we spend, all of our boilers and rooftop units and all those things. That's time-sensitive. We have to get a lot of homework in pretty quickly. We're seeing the mayor again next week, I think, Alex?
March seventeen.
March seventeen to finalize all the homework. Has to go to Rye pretty quickly to get approved. The big piece here is the rules are going to change a bit after the spring, so we'd really have to get it in to qualify. What else do I want to mention to you, Steve? In terms of enrollment, that's always a question we're asked. Right now, today, we're at forty-six seventy-four. It's run down to one student more than the last year. In terms of NSDAQ, they have us going in next year at forty-five eighty-eight, and I think NSDAQ is, you know, it's close. They're up by two percent. I think it's probably not one reason why we're getting more students, probably a couple reasons why. To me, it's probably a combination of folks coming back from the parochials, the charters, and folks moving in, but we are going up still, so I think we'll see more of that going forward. I would emphasize, though, I've been asked probably four or five times in the past two weeks, are the schools empty? We are not empty. I would love to walk anyone around any school. We are fully subscribed to all eight schools. So, that is a topic of conversation. Happy to walk folks around to show them that we are fully enrolled in all the schools. In terms of budget drivers, just a few thoughts there. You know, Alex always gives you a sheet of drivers. The short story is the ones we can control, the committee is doing a good job, I think, controlling them. Salaries are up by one-point-four percent since two thousand and eight. Pension, which we can control, five-point-five percent increase from that time. Utilities, down two-point-three percent from two thousand and eight. Medical, down two-point-one percent from that time. Special ed tuition's down six-point-three percent, which is really, really good news. Charter school's up two-hundred-and-ninety-two percent since two thousand and nine. So, all in all, the ones we can control, we're really happy with, and the ones we can't control, I've already talked to you about those. So, essentially, that is kind of the thumbnail of the budget. I think when I refer to fiscal sub-inference meetings to really go read through the budget.
Any questions for Dr. Thornton? Do we have any understanding of any plateauing of pension obligations, or will that continue to increase at the rate it has Mr. Prignano?
Mr. Prignano.
The pension, the pension will, there's no plateau leveling off on pension.
Can you come to the microphone? Thank you. Mr. Ryan.
The question, will pension, not that I'm aware of, it's based on, you know, the number of things that go into pension calculations, there's five-year averaging of the investments, and they often, you know, they review mortality rates on occasion and stuff, and whatever the actuaries determine or needed to fund pensions, that'll be spread out over the various school districts in the state. I'm not aware of anything that's going to slow down this. You know, it's been growing at about seven percent on the certified the last couple of years, about nine percent on the non-certified. So, it's...
It's very steep. And do they give you projections for three years?
No, no, I don't have, I just have the most recent numbers.
And when do they give that to you?
They gave it to us quite some time ago, what it was going to be for this year.
Thank you. That's all. Thanks. Appreciate it. Mr. Dunn.
Does this get posted now, or does it, when does it get posted? The budget, or they cover, let the rest of you?
Yeah, they cover the letter and...
Yeah. We probably post it all tomorrow, but that means we should see it before it's going out.
Thank you. Mr. Demonic.
We're going to post this up on the website. Did we just mock the budget as budget number one? So, if it changes, number two, number three.
Number one.
Yes.
So, it would go to fiscal, and then we'll meet on that in a week from Tuesday, or is there any tentative schedule for that?
I don't know if we have a tentative schedule yet, but I know we are meeting next month for a joint meeting with Town Council.
Thank you. So, if we do have a schedule, just if we can post that, I think that would be helpful for the committee.
Madam Chair, I was just going to poll the members by email and see when they'd like to meet to discuss the budget and notify the public that this budget season time, so come on out.
Excellent. And as Dr. Thornton said, we do have our pre-budget meeting with the Town Council, and that meeting is scheduled for Monday at Cumberland Library at, I don't know, six-thirty? And that's at the Cumberland Library, and that is open to the public.
The Hayden Center.
The Hayden Center at the library, right? Isn't that the Hayden, you go around and...
Yes, I believe it's at the community room.
Right, where the library was.
Councilman?
The community room at that library, not the Hayden Center.
It's the community room.
I thought that's the second floor.
Second floor. Thank you, counselor. Excellent. Next item, Discussion and a Vote to Approve Homeschool Instruction Request for Two Thousand and Sixteen School Year. Mr. Mitchell?
Madam Chair, we don't have any this evening.
Not this evening, so there'll be no action. Next item, Discussion and a Vote to Approve Purchase of New Lawn Care Equipment. Mr. Demonic, was this in fiscal?
Madam Chair, it was in fiscal. I forgot to note that. Mr. Prignano presented some information regards to lawn care in the district. Currently, we spend about fifteen thousand dollars a year to do it in-house, and we did have one local company give us a price of thirty-five hundred dollars per cut-in for the schools, which we do about nineteen times a year, so that won't be happening anytime soon. But we did talk about some of the equipment that we have cut the grass, and the last major piece of equipment we bought was when Mr. Richard Hill was in charge of building the grounds. It was duly noted, someone had voted against it at the time.
That was me.
Yes. So, we're looking at maybe buying some new, possibly buying some new equipment, buying two pieces and putting them at each end of the town, making sure we can transport it and get the grass cut and so forth. So, this doesn't take away from plantings of flowers and stuff which we'll use landscaping companies for, but this is just to cut the grass.
Mr. Prignano.
I checked today on some of that equipment. It's about a three or four-week period before you receive it, so we'll come back to the next meeting. We were looking at a couple of pieces of grass-cutting equipment, and we also mentioned for more money, you could get, you know, a piece of equipment that could also, you know, help with snow removal and that type of stuff, but that's, you know, forty-three thousand compared to like twenty-something thousand. So, we wanted to, the committee, the subcommittee wanted to see the specs and make some decisions, but I think it'd be worth our while. And the reason the price was so high from doing it with the vendor is we'd have to pay prevailing wages. So, an equipment operator would probably be getting twenty-something dollars an hour. Right now, when we hire a temp, we pay, you know, ten bucks an hour, nine bucks an hour, something like that. We would be forced to pay prevailing wages for a couple of people to come in and cut grass. The number of times that we would do it, it would be about sixty-five thousand dollars compared to the fifteen we're spending now, so. These are the things that, we're the lowest-funded district in the state. These are the type of things that people don't really, they see a teacher in every classroom with these, you know, other type of services that people don't see as where we really have to skip and cut back on, you know.
Mr. Salvatore.
Mr. Prignano, what, who's advising us on what kind of equipment we should buy?
A Sedex.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Prignano, just a quick question. We had said purchasing equipment that would be at kind of two separate ends uptown. Would we have the trailer to transport them?
We have, we have one trailer now.
We do. Excellent. If I recall, that was part of the issue the last time. Not to belabor that. Okay, next item on the agenda. Oh, is there a vote on that, or we're looking for more information?
It was just a discussion only at this time.
Thanks, Mr. Demonic. Next item, Discussion and a Vote to Approve Amended Policy, so we have no action on that this evening. Excellent. And next item, Personnel Recommendations. No personnel recommendations? Thank you, Mrs. Fogle. Amazing. Next item on the agenda, School Committee Comments, School Liaison Report. Anyone? Mr. Fiorello.
I would just like to thank Councilman Peter Bradley, who responded to a request to clear snow away from the dumpsters over at Court. During all the snowfall, the dumpsters were blocked from being able to be dumped or emptied, and he was able to go out there with his personal equipment and clear that all the way, so I'd like to just say thank you to Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Mr. Salvatore.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. On Monday, I believe it was Monday, I apologize, I don't have the date down, I attended a meeting in conjunction with Rhode Island Department of Education and the Rhode Island Health Department as it relates to the Health and Wellness Schools Initiative. We had representation there from North Cumberland Middle School, from the high school, and also from BF Norton, and other districts included North Kingston, Pawtucket, and I wanted to say, I apologize, it was one more, I think it was Warren, Warren, Rhode Island. And two things, the people from Rye and the people from Department of Health are on a first-name basis with our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Mitchell. So, you know, it's nice to show up to a meeting like this, and you see people in charge of these initiatives, and they know Mr. Mitchell very well. There's a couple of things that I derived from that meeting that I'm not going to bore you with, but a couple of things did stand out. One of them was a PEP grant, Pawtucket, Pawtucket was the other district that showed up. It's a PEP grant that currently Pawtucket, one, Pawtucket and Newport, it's worth one-point-two million dollars, a three-year grant that helps to drive initiatives within supporting of healthy schools and exercise programs and awareness. And a couple of different initiatives that I found very interesting that they're working on. The state of Rhode Island requires one hundred minutes, correct, Mr. Mitchell? One hundred minutes of exercise per week. So, any which way that a student can get one hundred minutes of exercise fulfills this type of engagement. One of them was that they're looking to do an exercise program that involves the parent and the child. So, I'm not sure, I believe we're looking into, our fiscal education instructors are looking into that. So, I kind of like that initiative because I know I could tend to lose a couple of pounds, and it also would drive some exercise with the children. Another one that I found interesting on the elementary and the middle school arena was that they pipe in music in the hallways in between lunches or different class changes, and it's coordinated, so you just don't have kids running around and cracking windows and, you know. But it gets them to move around in the hallways, and this can also bring out exercise within the children. So, this is a couple of initiatives that our physical education instructors are looking at. I figured I'd mention, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore. Anyone else? Hearing none. We do not have executive session this evening, so I need a motion to adjourn. Oh, and I want to recognize Counselor Schmidt. Thank you, gentlemen. Not to embarrass your counselor. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, second by Mr. Dunn. All those in favor? Those opposed? And we are adjourned at eight forty-five.